Microphones are on. Okay, could everyone start taking your seats, please?
It was voting something.
Yeah, you need one more.
Thanks for that break, Ben.
Okay, we got, yeah, I was.
The ladies break too.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the meeting back to order. Hi. And we've had the ordinance read, and John, take it away.
Good evening. As you noticed, I'm not Alexis, so I'll just go through a brief history of how we got here, and then hand it over to her. If you remember back to July 2nd of this year, we passed our large-scale retail ordinance, and at that time, there were a few unresolved issues, and you had asked for us to work with Ms. Montgomery to go through those. They started with a lengthy list, and that list was modified and changed until, at this point, the latest correspondence we had was for four issues that remained. Of those, I'll go through this real quick, there was some questions as to the language of the alternative betterment plan and code reference numbers. We will address that, so that's not a problem. Second issue was loading areas, and there was a question as to the clarity of which side of the loading area needed to be landscaped. We can make a change, that's not a problem. A third issue was a change to the standards within the variations in massing. Now, this is an area which we do not agree needs to be changed, and the standards for undulations and architectural detail for each of these large-scale retail buildings, we believe should remain as written and approved. The fourth item was out parcels, liner buildings, and there was a question as to view corridors within, through the landscape buffer, and what we're looking to do, and what we believe is in the ordinance, allows for clustering of landscaping, which would allow you up to 50 feet between the canopy of trees. And there was also a question as to whether there should be a deviation procedure or a modification to how sites are designed, whether they include liner buildings, the increased landscaping, or out parcels. We believe that the language as written creates a standard, and each site can then be evaluated upon its own merits if there needs to be a change, or if there are certain design characteristics that either limit or direct development in a certain way. So those were the four items that we had narrowed down to with Montgomery. As you heard from the list, we are generally down to one issue, and with that, I will allow Ms. Crespo to present the other changes.
Thank you, good evening, Alexis Crespo. On behalf of staff, this is a very brief presentation. I just wanted to run you through the changes we've made working with Ms. Montgomery since July 2nd. And I do just want to re-up with you all that this is for big boxes citywide, this is not for one specific site. There's a number of properties along your very highly-traveled arterial corridors that are impacted by this ordinance, and that we want to bring up to a higher standard to achieve those aesthetics that the council has directed us to do. So the proposed revisions in the document you have before you include a change regarding outdoor lighting. This was simply really a Scrivener's Error-type change to clarify that businesses that are open for 24 hours a day do not have to dim their lights or have special security lighting. If they're open 24 hours a day, they'll meet the regular lighting code. Sidewalks along building frontages, this is one of the items brought up by Ms. Montgomery. We worked with her, realized she was correct, that the sidewalks in front of smaller out parcel structures did not need to be a combined 14-foot in width, and so we were able to reduce that requirement to a smaller sidewalk for those, again, smaller out parcel buildings. Building perimeter plannings, we made a change there to remove redundancy with loading area buffers, so that they wouldn't have to be buffering a buffer, so removing some of those additional planning requirements that we did not feel were necessary. Patron space, it was talked about a lot when we took this ordinance through the first time, we realized there were still a couple places that talked about it being public and connecting to public sidewalks, and we realized we needed to clean that up to address that this would be for patrons and employees. Architectural standards relating to variations in massing, as John said, this is one of our outstanding issues. What we did do, though, in this revision is clarify the deviation process, so that an applicant, if they cannot meet these standards, can apply at the time of planned development zoning for a deviation, if they're going through a zoning process, or if they have a development order and don't want to be kicked into zoning, they can do a betterment plan at the time of development order, which is entirely administrative, handled through Mr. Vincent and John Dahmer. So we wanted to clarify that process, so they would have the comfort that if it didn't work for them, they could still get through with their plans that work for their clients. And then, lastly, on out parcel and liner building placement concepts, this was also heavily discussed, that certain amount of building frontage couldn't be accommodated by certain sites, and so we did want to add an enhanced landscape buffer option in the case that, let's say, a Walmart didn't want to do any out parcels in front, or just wanted to do one small out parcel building, they didn't have to meet the 60% frontage requirement, they could simply do a wider buffer clustered plannings to create an enhanced aesthetic without requiring actual buildings to be there, which could be difficult for certain sites. I can continue to walk you through the underlines. I think that pretty much sums up what I was going to cover. John's mentioned a couple items that we can work on before second hearing on the 15th.
Yes, and just for everyone's benefit, this ordinance already exists, does it not?
Yes, sir, on July 2nd.
So we've, this is the ordinance, I'm just, this is the ordinance that we've passed, and we've come back, like we said we would, to work on it and make some adjustments here or there, so that's what you're referring to. I want to kind of make that clear for everyone, possibly.
Correct, we committed to going back through it and trying to clean up some areas with Ms. Montgomery in the Benita Exchange parcel.
Okay, and so the one issue that you said that you haven't agreed upon is the massing or the alternate, or whatever, the flexibility, what do you call it, the difference in size, or whatever it is?
Projections and recesses.
Projections and recesses, there you go.
Correct.
So would you, can you explain that to council a little bit, why that has become a contentious issue a bit, or what that exactly means? Do you have something that you can demonstrate what that means?
Yes, I believe Mr. Vincent has brought a graphic to show you all the importance of that.
Because we're going to need to look at that.
Sure.
Counsel, is that okay? I'm sorry.
For the record, Sam Vincent, City Architect. This was an issue, it's always an issue. It's an issue of design, and so what I did today, if you'll rotate that 90 degrees, is create the different requirements that we have when you have a different-sized building. If you, so we can get this flipped and zoom in a little bit. It was easier to draw. If we can enlarge this a little bit, I don't know if we can or not, but you have a diagram that shows the square footages that we have in our requirements. We have six different required square footages, or examples, and these are just one example of how a designer might be able to approach the problem of recesses and projections. And the reason that that's a problem is that most architects are trying to reduce the scale of things, to make them more friendly and sort of one-on-one with the person. You can relate to it, is what I'm saying. And so what they do is go through an exercise that works with a plan and square footage here, to see what may happen based on a code requirement. Here, on the drawing on the left, the upper left over here, we start with 40,000 square feet, and in that requirement, we have a distance, a linear distance of building that is, I think, 95 feet, and it shows there in proportion what that really looks like. And if you look across the diagrams here, you can see that the setbacks that we were requiring are not that deep, based on the length of the building. And down in front, and I'll walk over here and show you this. This little line here is not really a line, and I thought it would be a way that you could relate to this, these are cars, end to end. For example, in the last one, we set a distance here of 150 feet for this biggest building, which is 150,000 square feet, and you'd have to line up 10 cars, you know that's pretty long, 10 cars before we make them recess the building. And so what we feel like, I do, is that that's a very good proportion. It works very well, particularly in a big building like this. And so I know that all of you were looking for the same thing, saying, "Let's try to bake these buildings, the bigger buildings, give us something of an undulation of the facade, to break down all of that mass." And what I've written works very well, as you can see here, there's not great changes from the different size of buildings that you have here. So it's problematic, in that I can do many things with this sketch in these distances by moving masses around to achieve what, to meet the code. And what I'm doing also is working with the applicants, if they have a deviation or a betterment plan, saying, "Come in and show me, if you don't want to undulate that facade, tell me what you're going to do in front to relieve that huge mass." So we're willing to talk to them at any level, say, "Okay, let's try to work through this and meet some kind of agreement on what that mass would look like." So basically, that's what this argument is about, is how far, how deep.
Okay, good. Any questions for Sam?
How far is that stepped back, when it does cut in?
It varies. Down here in the smaller buildings, it steps back 16 feet. The next one is with 70,000 square feet, it steps back 16 feet, 20 feet, and in this...
With each step, it's 20 feet, or overall with the two steps?
Each step, you see the sawtooth, 95 feet, 150 feet, you step it back 16 or 20 feet, whatever it is, and that relationship, I find, is a good relationship to break the scale down.
Does it need to continually step back, or can it go step back and then step back forward?
That's right. You can do anything you want with this, it's just one example of what a designer might be able to do. I could take the masses and move them around on the front, I just can't exceed the distances, the maximum distance of one long mass before I have to step it back, but I can pull two out like this and recess the center. So you see why I'm saying it's problematic, and I need to take a look at what you're doing to see if these distances are making sense with the design that you have. The object here is to get good design. Numbers are misleading, because there are a number of things that designers can do to relieve the mass of a building. This is not the only thing they can do, and that's the reason that we want to do it by deviation. If you don't, if you can't meet these standards, come talk to us, and let's see how we can work this thing out where you get what you want, and we can get what we want, as a city.
Okay, and what you have is that these aren't, these are examples in the code, but there's an actual mathematical calculation that you go by so many feet?
Yes.
Yeah, you have to have so much of a...
We break it down in the code. So if I'm building a 150,000-square-foot building, I'm looking at these numbers on the end, meaning that the maximum distance, horizontal distance, would be 150 feet, I believe, and you set, you step back, I think it's 24 feet.
Now, Sam, is this something that is new, that's unexpected, that companies like Mall Mart or other people, that they're going to be, "Oh, wow, we've never seen this before," or this particular...
No, I don't think this is unusual.
Circumstances?
I think they have prototypes that they use, and they develop these prototypes for several reasons. Economics is one, the aesthetics of the stores another. Most of them have Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. You might be a Plan C city, which is not the best. You may be a Plan A city, and you're getting the best. So this is one of the ways to make the designers think a little about which plan they're going to give us, because it's based on economics.
But this does happen other places, this particular mathematical...
Not this exact mathematical...
Not this exact one.
Nope.
So it may be different, it may not exist someplace else.
Miami may be different, Cape Coral may be different.
Okay, all right, questions? Yes, Mike?
What would a deviation be? You said if they didn't go with this, they could come to you with a deviation that you'd consider.
Well, let's say that Publix wants to come in, and they say, "You know, if you make me break my store up like this, it really destroys the interior. I won't have a good store, an efficient store. I can't go in and out, because the layout of the store doesn't, the shelving and so forth, doesn't work." And so I'm saying, "Come in and talk to me, let's see what else we can do. If you can't come out or back, give me a colonnade across the front to relieve all of that mass, or give me some glazing underneath there to relieve that."
Why couldn't we just put that in as an option?
The deviation is a better way to do it, because there are endless options. There are, there are endless options. I mean, I could work with this thing and show you something different tomorrow.
Could it just be worded as the front needs to be broken up, so it looks more pleasing, instead of saying, "You got to do this and..."
The problem with that is you have good designers and you have bad designers, you have good clients and bad clients. Clients that don't want to spend a nickel on a store, and others that say, "Hey, I'm interested in good-looking stores." For example, Target was headed in that direction, they still are. They got some very interesting stores. They're spending the money, because they realize good design is good for business. And so they're making, but again, there are prototypes they use, they don't use the same prototype and spend the same money in every situation.
But why would we be using this mathematical equation if it's not everywhere? If this is something new, if there's other communities that have something else that breaks it up, why wouldn't we look at it the way they're doing it?
This proportioning system is mine. Another architect will have a different proportion system. This is not cast in stone, this is not objective, it's subjective.
But we have a review process where they're coming in, they're showing you the building.
Right.
And if we had something that said the front needs to be broken up, you're going to be looking at all the different options that they're...
Every one of them, yes.
So why would we need this in there, then? Because if they came to you with a plain front face, and you said, "No, it's in there, it needs to be broken up," then they're going to give you some options.
Well, because in the last nine years, I've seen a lot of plans come through the office, and some are very good, some are very bad, and without some sort of writing, some description of what you think is good design, someone sets that standard, then you're getting a lot of things that should not be passed. And if it's not written, you can't back that up. I have to have it written, or I can't, I got to prove it.
So, and that's really to the crux of the problem, is that in the past, you feel as though that without, you know, I think we've been through this on some, several occasions, without this saying that you have to do this, then you can't ever get them, any leverage so far as an architect, you know?
Right.
You'll have a perpetual argument going on back and forth, "We can't do it," "Well, I think you can't," "No, you can't," back and forth.
That's right, and what you'll find with architects is that they would rather have rules and regulations than none at all. It's very difficult to design something where there's no budget, and every sky's a limit.
Well, and I think that the, I guess the fear, I don't know, it's been a long time since I had somebody come up to me, and "I'm afraid we'll not have any more big boxes than Benita." Haven't heard that in a while. Haven't heard that at all, but anyway, it's probably not the best thing to do. I think that that's the fear, is that we don't want to put something in effect, because I know as a contractor, what I don't like is uncertainty.
Exactly.
I do like a set of rules that I can work with, and if I take a look at it and I say, "Well, that's the only thing I can do," "Well, that doesn't fit me," well, then I, and while you can get a deviation, eh, I really, you know, it, there has to be something in there generally that makes me understand that, yeah, I can work with this, I can work with this person there. And I have no doubt that you will, because I think you've proven that, that you will work with people, but I think that that's the concern out there, is that that's the perception.
Fear that there's no flexibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can find words to say that, that, you know, this is not cast in stone. If you want to be creative, come in and let's take a look at it together. I enjoy architecture, and I enjoy working with all the people that come in, so I look forward to that.
Yeah, and most, I would say, most big boxes are going to have to come in for a planned commercial development anyway.
Yes, yes.
And so if they do that, that's where the deviation process...
And you may not have to go to a deviation, you may be able to show me something that's just very outstanding, and you've got some very good reasons why this is not good for you. My opinion is, okay, let's see it.
So then, you're saying that you have the ability as an architect to go ahead, without a deviation, to go ahead and approve something else?
Yes, because I know good architecture.
Counsel, you're the guy.
I mean, you know, that's why you have me here, but that's how you work it, that's how you do it.
Okay, Carl?
If I might, my experience has shown, much has, Sam has already indicated, that you will have applicants come in, and they will do the minimal. If you give them a general description, like, "Let's break up the front," they will define that on their own, and they'll come in and present it and argue it, and it just makes it very, very difficult. I see this in different terms, I see this as showing kind of the order of magnitude of breaking up that we would like to see, and if the applicant gets that, they may not be able to meet this specific thing, but again, as Sam indicated, they can come, they know our order of magnitude, and they come in with not minimal, but something that they, at least in their minds, is equivalent or better to what's being proposed here in terms of order of magnitude. So, again, I think it gives them a starting point to look at as they design these buildings, and of course, work with Sam to get us where we need to be.
Okay, any more questions for Sam?
Is there a way to say that you would work with them?
Yes.
Because say, like, I'm looking at coming into the city, I want to open up Mike's big-box store, and, you know, I just scanned the thing, and I see, "Okay, I got to do that," "Yeah, I don't want to do that." I mean, what's to tell me that, well, I can go in and ask for a deviance?
I agree.
And how is that not like squeezing somebody for, you know, extortion almost, you know, say, "Okay, well, if you don't want to do this, if you do this over here, we'll kind of give you a..."
Well, it's a...
Well, it's not, because we have lots of regulations where we require somebody to do something.
Yeah.
So it's not really, it's not really that. I think what they're trying to do is set up regulations that are firm, that somebody can point at, and they know what it is, but they're also leaving the door open that, eh, you know what, if you can't do this, and for just cause, we'll allow you to do something else. It's like any other variance process or zoning process that we have. You've got to be 15 feet from property line, you've got to be 25 from the back, you've got to be this and that. Is that set in stone? No.
No.
For a good reason, for deviation, counsel, in the development process, they can forgive that, they can do this and that, or whatever. But that's the way I understand it.
It is, and what I can add to that is, with projects like this, we'll have a pre-app meeting, pre-application meeting, before they submit for the D.O., and they'll bring some architectural drawings in, and I'll get with them and say, "Okay, you know, you're heading in the right direction, or you have some problems with this or that." And we tend, in almost every case the last nine years, have worked it out. We've worked it out. But I think you're right, there need to be some words there that say that we're, I guess, open to suggestions, and we do offer that with the styles. If you have a style that's outside of what we're wanting you to do, or like for you to do, bring it in, and let's take a look at it.
Alexis?
I just want to add, if you look at page 19, we've, to address the concern about the deviation, we put the language directly in here, that the applicant may request a deviation or alternate design in accordance with this chapter, and go on to say that it must demonstrate compliance with the stated intent of reducing building mass and creating a human-scale design. So we put the deviation right out there for people to know that they can ask for it and show it meets the intent.
Okay, all right, any other questions? We're going to end up at public comment, I bet here. I'm just trying to figure out who would talk about this. No, hold on, I'm not saying it yet, hold on, hold on, hold on, we're not there yet, wait, Neil. She's too quick. All right, yes, Mike, what else?
Yeah, I did have a couple questions in here. On page 17, I know it was changed for the patron space to have direct access to the, it was public sidewalk, now it's the internal sidewalk. I just want to make sure that the internal sidewalks will connect to the external sidewalks, so that way they're not walking up the street and then have to walk in the entrance to get to the other sidewalks.
Yes, I believe that's covered in the bikeways and pedestrian ways section, which is on page 13 of your ordinance. States that sidewalks must be provided and connect to the external sidewalk system.
Okay, and then, other question was on page 22, under the modern contemporary minimum requirements, well, actually, it's under the additional optional requirements. It asks for the use of bold colors, but then, primary colors are not allowed. How do you get any bolder than primary colors?
I'm going to have to defer that one.
And why do we have an agenda against primary colors?
I believe that's, I believe that's the same question you asked a while ago.
But now it's on buildings, though. Now we're saying you can't have a primary color on your building when you're asking for a bold color.
I believe that's not, the code does allow trim to be primary colors, I believe that's for the, you know, the building itself to be entirely of a primary color, and if Sam would like to add to that, that was...
This whole color conversation, I think, is kind of funny, mainly because when I look at these, I can't tell one from the other. I really, I really can't, I see a little difference there.
And there was more difference on the screen.
But, no, wait a minute, are they that different?
But when you print it out, you don't know if it's really that true.
You don't get to talk anymore from outside. No, I mean, seriously, I mean, that 15%, I got to tell you, that 15% change is as close to nothing, I mean, I mean, that I have ever seen. This is nothing to argue about. The fact that they did, in my opinion, the fact that this, that this right here is what we're requiring right here, instead of this, how is, how is that an argument to have?
Exactly, exactly, then why can't we just have the orange, then? If we're saying, then... Okay, but, go ahead, Sam.
Your question's a good one, and I put that in there because that's typically what your modern designs do, they challenge the color spectrum. Best Buy, not Best Buy, yes, Guess Best Buy is blue, the building's blue, it's a primary blue. Plenty of stores do that for all the reasons we heard here tonight. So if you come in with a modern design according to those requirements, yeah, bold design, if you want to choose it, but it is contradictory, and I think we probably need to address that very thing. I'm glad you brought that up.
And then, the other thing I had a question about was page 26, back to the out parcels. We're requiring a 60% blockage of the rear building. Why 60%? You know, why can't we give them a little more flexibility with 50%? Because if they didn't have any out parcels at all, they could have a landscape buffer, and in the landscape buffer, you can clump your trees, but then you can see through and see the building behind it. So, you know, why wouldn't we allow the same thing if you had a building there?
Well, what this allows, and the 60% was approved previously, and what this does is, if you don't meet the 60%, let's say a 40%, you do the enhanced buffer.
Okay, so that is allowed now, because I thought the last time I brought it up, they said, you know, we're not doing that, because then everybody would go to 25% and add extra landscaping.
The landscape option, we listened to the comments.
So it's not just if there is no out parcel, you can do landscaping, it's if you have an out parcel, and it's smaller than the 60%, you can still do the landscaping?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Neil?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm just guessing.
For the record, Neil Montgomery, and I do want to thank the staff. John's right, I started with a list of 20-something, and we have whittled that list down, and I am appreciative, and I think all the changes that they went through earlier are all helpful and helpful corrections and clarifications. I agree with Sam that you need to have a good design, and that design has to be good, both interior and exterior, because if the building doesn't function internally, you don't have a good business, and that doesn't function internally, and Sam alluded to part of the reasons why that doesn't function internally in terms of shelving and efficiency, and just, you know, how logistically everything works inside. Now, what I heard Sam say is, and I think the mayor, is what we want to do is break up the massing, agree. There are ways to do it other than destroying the efficiencies on the inside. I think that you can use a variety of techniques, which can be changes in texture, changes in paint, architectural features on the outside, colonnades, and I was involved in one, kind of, that proved up the road, where we went through their planning panel, and they looked at it and did a lot of those things to break up the massing, not just on the front, but all the way around in terms of paint, and, you know, things on the towers and on the corners and things like that, so there are a lot of things that you can do. What this says, though, it says, "The design of a large-scale retail establishment must, must is mandatory, for glutamonolistic building mass, which we agree with, provide a human scale." I don't know exactly what that is, and then it says, "The design emphasis must include projections and recesses." That's a mandatory must. I think, though... I think though, that if you look at other ordinances, and I did, there, there was lead-in language that says things like, "Techniques should be used to reduce the scale of the building, such as strong shadow lines, changes in roof lines, pattern in the surface material and wall openings. The facade elements can be coordinated and should be with the landscape plan for balanced proportion and continuity." Okay, I think that's a better description of what I think you're trying to accomplish. Because just for a minute envision that this is a big box and you, and that's what you have. You have those three projections, just like it is there. You don't have changes in color, you don't have, you know, any of the, the roof, changes in roof line. You don't have changes in height, you, you don't have changes in texture. Can you get a mental picture of that and tell me you think that really is going to be the attractive building that you want? Or is it really a combination of all those things that, that people ought to be allowed to do? And I agree with Alexis that they, and I appreciate the language that they added in that says that you can request a deviation. But when I talk about a deviation, I'm asking for a deviation from projections and recessions. And it doesn't say I can eliminate the use of that severe projection recession and do other architectural, completely different architectural features to break up the massing of the building. And that's really what we need to do. And I, I heard when Sam described what he wanted, that that's things that he talked about, but it doesn't say that. And it would be so helpful if we could put language in that's more descriptive, that I think is going to give you what you're looking for in terms of a better building, but provide more certainty for both sides. I, I heard what he said, that some people was designed to the minimum. And he's probably right. But if you give us, it, it's like giving us a broader paint palette, you know, and, and including more descriptions of other ways to break up the massing of the building other than that. You've done that in terms, you did a really great job in terms of, uh, the different kinds of architecture and the different kind of things, you know, in, in the other section. And I think that's great. If we could provide for more variety and opportunity in this section, like we did in other sections, I think you'll get to a place that you want to be and that people can live with and everybody can be happy and we can grow businesses in the city.
Thank you very much.
And if you all agree to hopefully give back direction to make the other changes that John alluded to earlier and regarding my other three comments, I can be shorter.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, Sam, do you, uh, do you want to comment on, on what Neil had to say so far as the, the ability to, uh, in other words, if, is this the choice? In other words, if they go in and they build a square box and they put these lines in it, they don't have to do anything with color, they don't have to do anything with roof line, it can be that box that looks like that?
Well, we have requirements, uh, that allow the applique that she's talking about in buildings. We do have that, we require that. Because those are the elements that create style. You get style from architectural language. So, what she's talking about in shades and shadows, this gives it to you depending on where the sun is. When you, when you set back and reseed and bring, you know, masses forward. Uh, the problem I have with applique is like putting lipstick on a pig. It's exactly that. I'm going to say it just that way because that's what it means. Is that I've got a box and I'm going to paint it up and hopefully make it look good. Well, by whose standards? This is guaranteed to break up the mass. Guaranteed. And you can see why. That's why I did the diagram. There's no question that I don't have a big box here. And that's what we've all been shooting for, not having big boxes. We want these people to come in and do some decent architectural work and give us something that we can be proud of and they can be proud of, not applique.
What about, um, her suggestion, maybe it wasn't her suggestion, but I, I, this is what I heard. That, you know, uh, if you have a deviation process, that, that you mentioned in the deviation process, some examples of what might be, uh, acceptable, might maybe be acceptable replacements for that? Adding some language in there?
Yes.
Uh, when you go for a deviation, uh, you can, uh, you, these are the things that, examples of things that you might do in that deviation process to break that up. I, I don't know, just, I mean, I don't know if that's helpful. That, that may give people an idea of what you might be looking for, I don't know.
You know, the, the problem that we have here is that, uh, architecture is an art and a science. As an art, it's an eyes-beholder. And there are some rules that you follow as an architect, uh, designing a building. And a, a lot of it is, is intuition. I mean, there's no way to hide that, it's intuition. It's your ability to create something beautiful from a piece of paper, uh, written words. But as I said before, I'd like to have guidelines, something that gets me started on this thing. I don't want to start with nothing. These kinds of things will get me started in the right direction, in my opinion.
But, but it, but it, because, yeah, everybody likes rules and guidelines. But because of that, m- might it be useful to, to have an example of what, what deviations might be considered?
Exactly. We can do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean, is that, is that- It, it, that may give, maybe we're splitting the baby here, but, uh, that maybe that would give somebody that, no, okay, well, these are some of the things that, that we might be able to do. It doesn't guarantee it.
Perfect, I, I like that.
That, that way they, you know, they're not fishing. I mean, I wouldn't want to come in there and go, okay, uh, Sam, uh, this is, we can't do that. Eh, wha- what do you want us to do? You at least gave them a place to start. Well, you might be able to take this.
I think that's right and, and we, we can give them, certainly give them a place to start and, but again, uh, I mean, I was an educator as well. Hey, you're the designer.
Yeah.
Show me something.
Yeah.
That's the way it's always handled, in architecture at least.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments before I go back down here? Mike, because I know he wants to talk, right? No?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, well, is she correct in that if, if she had the step backs or a big box store did the step, step backs and they painted their building all beige, the roof line would still be flat and all they would have is those step backs?
No, that's not right. If you read through the requirements, we have a list of about 12 things they must do. And I made sure in writing those, that those 12 things will give us a style that doesn't look like this. So you're using several things to create this building, not just a plan like this. This is one example.
So it's not dimensions in a parking lot and crosshatching on the roof and that like that?
So, so would they, are they required to have those 12 different things?
Yes.
And would that effectively break up a big box even, even if they didn't have a step?
There are two things here. One is projections and recesses, which deal with mass, how big something is. The other requirements deal with style. What do you need to create the, the Florida style? What elements? What language? Uh, rafters, a porch, baluster, those sorts of things, uh, uh, gable roof. This is pure massing. And this is one of the hardest things to accomplish is taking a big building and breaking this thing up, if your client allows, to, to break it up. If we don't do this, we will get a box, a square or a rectangle, period. Why? Because what drives that design is economy. How we set the shelves up in the store, what is up front, what's in the middle and what's in the back. And ba- basically, things work best in a box. Try to put a couch in a circle. Very difficult. It's those kinds of things that you deal with. But if I don't give them stuff and something to start with like this, I'm going to get a box. I guarantee you.
Well, I agree with the mayor, I think we should have other wording in there saying, you know-
We can do that.
If you don't do this, these are the other options. And they would be best-case scenario options, something that would be appealing even if they had to go straight. Um, and, but I did have one other note I forgot to go over earlier.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, on the, um, the required mass transit, um, they're supposed to have a bench or a, um, a shelter. Uh, it, can we have it so it's required to have a light, lighting in there? Because, you know, as, as we all know, it gets dark early in the, uh, in the winter here. Um, and, and just sa- safety lighting for the people that may be waiting for the bus. Because it, it doesn't physically say it in there, I just want to make sure that there will be some lighting there for them.
Yeah, we discussed this at the last time around.
At the local planning agency, and as I recall, I think, uh, Mr. Gugiaro could probably get a better answer, but I don't believe that, um, they are necessarily designed for lighting.
Well, I mean, it could be external lighting, right? You know, something there that's going to light it up for them or, I know-
Jason to a streetlight?
I, I know they have solar-powered, uh, lights and, I can, I've been in other cities where there are lighting in the, uh-
Let's ask a question. Are, are bus shelters, are they, are they illuminated?
No. They can be.
But they're not?
They're not normally, but they can be.
You may need to change an interlocal agreement to, to do this. And, and like-
What?
No, I'm, you, you're missing a point. I'm just, I'm just making a point, so, okay.
Okay, well, I, the point is well-taken and we will go back and see what we can work on.
Yeah, you know, because you may have a, a mother and children coming out of the store, they're sitting waiting for a bus and, and I don't want to see them in a dark shadow, you know?
And, and, and being lit is, that can be a real simple thing.
Yes.
As long as you don't make how much lit, you can just light it.
Correct.
Could be easy. Okay? Anything else? Oh, oh, I will.
Public comment.
I will. All right, I'm just checking on council. Yes, come on up.
Good evening, my name is Robin Stokes, I'm with Stratford Land. We are the owner of the property at I- 75 Benita Beach Road, um, called Benita Exchange. And, um, our property has been impacted by this particular ordinance. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you all today about our concerns on this issue. First, I want to say that I do appreciate staff's efforts up to this point. It's been a long slog from, um, July until now. And we have made a number of, uh, improvements and we've made some progress on areas we've given, they've given. Um, and we've come down to these past, these last few issues. One point that I would want to make to Mr. Dolmer's comment about the out parcels, I think I, I may respectfully disagree that the language to me is not clear, that you can have building and/or landscaping and that's the only thing we want to make sure is clarified. That it's not building or landscaping, but both of those could solve, um, could create the, the desired intent with respect to screening of the big box. And then to the point about, um, the recesses and the projections, uh, we did have that property under contract. The contract buyer, uh, exercised their option to terminate that contract and in large part, it was because of this language. Their, uh, tenant that they were, were going to be building for, the cost that they would incur for operations as well as the additional building cost would not make it feasible for them to go forward with this project. As a cheerleader along with you, um, you know, partner along with you as a landowner in this area, we're selling Benita Springs, we're selling this, uh, area, um, as well as you are. And we agree with the intent of having good design and having good aesthetics. Uh, we don't have a problem with that. What we'd like to see is to have some baseline language that works. If a developer is coming to us to buy that property and they come and with the understanding that they're going to have to go to the deviation process and most, 90% of the groups that come to us for a, a business of that size are going to have to get a deviation, then what we're going to end up with is a situation where we're talking about, uh, potentially creating essentially a design review board. My understanding from our conversation with staff, uh, when we met with them, I believe in late July, is that, that that's not the intent. No one wants to have to approve everything in that fashion that comes through, but everything is going to require a deviation, um, for that, for, for projects of that size. Um, the efficiency is important to them. It may not be, you know, internally what you necessarily want to see, but the efficiency part is, um, important to them. But other things can be do- done on the external that will solve the problem. We sent over five different examples of other areas, I believe at least two of those in Florida, um, and then also from other states that have similar language that is workable. It was a baseline that it was something that could work. And, and I think that people would have the impression coming in as they present their plan that, ah, this works on the base level, um, but not quite for me. And then they'd feel more comfortable. When the base level doesn't work, my fear is that it's going to detract other people. As other groups have talked to us about the site, they want to know why the other group dropped the contract. So then it comes back to this conversation and they say to themselves, am I going to have a better result? And it just leaves ambiguity that I don't think is what is desired. And I understand the desired intent and largely agree with it. We want to create a, a nice project in a nice environment. Um, it's just coming up with language that works. And I am a little disheartened, um, and the contract buyer, um, reflected that as well when he called me to let me know that they were canceling the contract. That on this point, whereas some of the other points, there's been movement, there's been no movement to the language, although we've provided, um, you know, samples, um, we've provided, you know, we even tried to, to come back with some language. Maybe if we saw something that, that was changing this, and I appreciate the co- the conversation about, uh, showing what the deviation process may look like, maybe at least that would give us something to comment towards. So I do appreciate the effort that we've taken to this point. I think that this issue is critical in terms of marketing our, our site and other sites like it. Um, there are other sites adjacent to ours where this would fall in the same category as well. But I appreciate your time and attention to this and hope that we can get a resolve for everyone.
Good, well, well done. Okay, uh, any other member of the public wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Good evening, Carolyn Gallagher. Did anybody else miss dinner tonight? I wanted to talk again on what Mike had talked about. I had seen this, uh, ordinance, uh, in draft previously with the LPA. But what I didn't, didn't realize when I was reading the green sheet tonight, uh, that the whole section of 3440, which dealt with transit facilities had, had been removed. I had been concerned with lighting. I think it's important to have something about public transit stops, uh, that are nearby. There are many women and children who would be waiting perhaps at night for, for a bus and I think it's a real safety issue. I think that originally, it, the wording included a roofed shelter and a bench. And I feel very strongly that some lighting of some sort, whether it's a solar lighting that continues after dark for a few hours, or whether it's street lighting where the, have a transit facility near some kind of street lighting or something. But I feel this whole area that has been left out is an important area that needs to be at least discussed again. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
First of all, let me apologize.
Oh, don't worry about it.
Because it wasn't said in sarcasm, really, people who have a problem, and really distinguishing between greens and reds may be colorblind, so I'm really sorry for my outburst, mayor.
It's, it's all right, I'm toying with you.
Please forgive me.
I'm toying with you.
Okay, well, I, I didn't mean to disrupt your meeting.
Sorry.
Uh, what she said. We, uh, we have, um, uh, bus shelters that we, F-City, uh, purchased that have a solar light in them. And it's a real smart thing because basically when the operation of a big box store, maybe, if it's not a 24-hour store, but maybe closes around nine or 10 o'clock and probably when that solar light probably give out. So then you don't have to hook up any electricity and bring it out there in a line, it's less expensive. So, might be something you want to consider. Two, can you have a menu? I mean, this might be fine, but I'm thinking of a, sorry Walmart, I'm going to say your name. I haven't shopped there for 18 years, I won't go. But, um, their building has bump outs like this? But architecturally, it's a gray building, it bumps out and it looks like a big box. It's, it's not attractive. Could, uh, could you say, if you don't do A, then go to menu B? And menu B, if you, if you can make it look like the Lowe's up in Astero, however they did that, do that. Because that, that, as far as a big box goes, it's a pretty attractive big box. It's broken up, it's to human scale, I think that's what you're talking about, bringing down. Our, our planners from the city have talked about human scale by putting those ban, those borders up along, what do we call those? Up along the facade. And then the third thing is, because I live behind a big commercial shopping center, you hear stuff all night long. A buffer, a building that's a buffer, well, that can be a buffer, but maybe you can make particular rules about being next to a residential area, because we still hear people throwing junk in the recycling and the machines are going and, you know, it's, it's 2:00 in the morning, they're cleaning grease traps. I mean, it's really loud. So, thank you and, um, let's get this meeting over with.
Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none. Uh, council, what's your pleasure? What would you like to do?
Well, I, I just had one more question with this, the protrusions and, uh, are we reinventing the wheel going with this? If, if there are other communities that have wording that works, why don't we just use that?
Go up to Astero and you can see the, the building there, the big box there with Lowe's. You can go down to Naples and see the same thing. You can go to the Target in Naples and they're all undulating in and out. And they do that because of the style of architecture and what the program is requiring them to do.
But are, are we scaring people off with this when other wording will get the similar effect, but just without scaring them off?
Well, no, uh, this is one example. Remember, I, I could give you 50 examples. Now, which one do you want to use? See, that's the problem you have here, is that you, the designer has to- See, that's the problem you have here, is that the designer has to design. He can't just take this sketch and come in and throw that in front of me and say, is this approved? Well, there are a lot of other things that go into this, other than this figure up here. We have a lot of regulations about what you have to provide on the building, in addition to this. This is what you're scared of most, right here, big box. This is a way to get away from big box guaranteed.
But in Astero, do they have, does it say this? And did Lowe's build it that way because it says this? Or did they have other wording that got the same effect without?
My question would be, why do we have to say what they say?
Well, and-
Don't mean to be disrespectful.
And I think we have, we have a bit of a different system here, I mean, where you, and that's why she mentioned architectural board. And a lot of times, when you get fairly vague, or you get artistic with the language, you will do this and that, well, then you have an architectural board, and you have a group of four, five, six, seven architects who get together, and they have at it. The reason we don't have that is because that's always, we thought that that was kind of scary. I thought that was as scary as a contractor. I don't want architects bad enough, why do I want to go with four, seven, sorry, seven of them? And so, that's why, that's why that, but that's why that they got to that point, they have some general guidelines, and so then they go after it, and they work that out. And I think what you're trying to do is, under the circumstances that you have, which is you, you're trying to set a template to where you have something there. Perhaps, perhaps us putting the language in there so far as showing what the deviation, and I think we need to be fairly specific and fairly generous with like, here, look at all these other things that you may well be allowed under certain circumstances to do. And who knows, maybe that will morph into something else, but I think that, as Mike was saying, that we at least, at the very least, need to add that language so that they don't have to just guess.
What we'll probably do is add the language and sketches like this, to show the different options that they can look at. That's pretty easy to design, I think we can do that easily. The regulations that Astero follows is Lee County. Ours came from Lee County. The architectural requirements, the architectural requirements.
Yeah, okay.
ECCL will add changes.
Well, yep, the basics though came from-
Okay, we're stopped there.
All right.
All right, good. Any other questions for Sam? Go ahead and have a seat for a minute, Sam, I think we're good. Carl, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, staff is happy to look at additional wording and try to make this clearer and more understandable. Sounds like council wants us to kind of look at that. There seems to be a lot of questions, at least about this method, and we'll go back and have something else to present to you.
Okay, and council, this is first reading of this ordinance, so I think that we've given them enough to chew on here for now, and that you'll continue to work. I think that you can see where the concerns lay about this. We don't want to, we don't want to cause this to be, you know, a big burden on anybody, but we do want good design. So with that in mind, and with you working on that, council, are you ready to move this to a second reading? And as before, we can always, if they don't bring back what you like, you can always send it down the road again to another second reading, and another second reading, and another second reading, if it doesn't come back to your satisfaction. So with that in mind, is there a motion to send us to second reading?
I'll send it. I'll make that motion to-
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, any other discussion? All's in roll, sorry about that, I went to a different meeting. Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, and Neil, we'll be talking to you later.
Thank you, sir.
And, okay, Audrey, get us out of here. What are we on?
We are on the following, it's a comprehensive plan. I'll read the title block into the record. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan, so as to create the Coconut Village Future Land Use Classification Category Further to amend the future land use map for that expedited state review. Comprehensive Plan Amendment, known as Astero Bay Marina, which is located in Section Seven, Township Forty-seven South, Range Twenty-five East, to designate approximately seventeen point three four, more or less acres, of land from Lee County, outlying suburban, twelve point oh seven acres, and wetlands, five point two seven acres, to Coconut Village, thirteen point six nine acres, and resource protection, three point six five acres, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading, the second reading will be held on October fifteenth, twenty fourteen, in these chambers, beginning at nine AM.
Counsel, you have any questions of staff? Staff, do you have a presentation to make here? Didn't think so.
I'll make a motion to move to second reading.
We have, oh, we're going to have public comment first. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none. Is that motion still good?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, item D.
Thank you. This is another ordinance, it's an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan, as adopted by Ordinance Number O-two dash sixteen, as amended, so as to update the potable water sub-element of the infrastructure element and the capital improvements element, to coordinate with the South Florida Water Management District's Lower West Coast Water Supply Twenty-Twelve Plan Update, and including a ten-year water supply facilities work plan as required by Florida Statutes, Section One-Six Three Point Three One Seven Seven, Subsection Six C, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes. I believe I do have a change into this, was this, put DCA instead of DEO? No, the other one. This is the first reading, the second reading will be on October fifteenth. If you have any questions, this was one where we did have a technical deficiency in the transmittal process, and that's why we're re-advertising.
Okay, council, any questions before I go to public comment?
So this is exactly what we passed on the seventh amendment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time, please come forward on this matter. Seeing none, council, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to move to second reading.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Audrey, you have a lot of ordinances?
No, I'm not, sir.
I'm not for a while.
The nice thing is, I don't have to say title block vote after public comment, I'll be ready to do a few more.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. I thought you said, no, I'm not. I'm not. Anyway, public comment, anyone wishing to speak on any city matter, please come forward.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath. I just want to remind everybody in the audience, listening and watching, the first annual Benita Springs Film Festival. We're excited, we've had so many entries, but I want everyone to know that the deadline has been extended from October third to the tenth. I won't read everything that's involved. Anyone who hasn't entered, who, I mean, we've got talent here in Benita, go to the city's website and read it. And the next thing I want to say is, and this is not for your benefit, but for people watching, is a favorite family of ours here in Benita, Bobby and Arlene Hunter and Big Sister Mara welcomed the addition to their family of twins, Lilian and Austin, two weeks ago today. And we all know that Arlene went to Florida State University, and they are huge Seminole fans, and I happened to be in her neck of the woods a couple of weeks ago, and guess what I found, and I hope Arlene's watching tonight, I've got cheerleading outfits for the twins to put on at the next big game. And thank you so much for the recognition for the tree.
You're quite welcome. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Two people left, they said, you going to stick around? Yes, say this for me. Alex Grant, please Martha, just say, we need to change the name of the DRGR in the city to the Western Everglades Benita, because of the hydro soils, and keep as an urban rural interface, and you can call it Web, Western Everglades Benita. Okay, thank you, Alex. Next, Mark Seldon was here, sorry, Mark, I said your name, but he's all in favor of this pond cleanup and landscaping, and he lives right down the street, and he can't wait to use it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we are on our way to, let's see, city attorney's report.
Thank you, I have three ordinances, and it is permission to advertise, this is the time where I do want changes, especially so I can make sure I have the title block done correctly, so I don't have to say, you can't do something, it makes me much happier. The first ordinance is something that Lee County adopted, and what they did is they scrubbed or cleaned their noise ordinance, because of the content, the sheriff would not, because there was content contained within the old noise ordinance, they worked with the sheriff's office, Abby Smith and John Holloway. I had the same ordinance that Lee County basically adopted. This way, the sheriff will do a hundred percent of the enforcement, because they are the ones who are out on Saturday nights, so it makes a lot more sense. There are some changes, it's more of a very objective standard. We did add some changes to the ordinance that does differ from Lee County. One is as to construction, one second. The City of Benita Springs does not allow commercial construction and demolition on Sundays, so that provision is in there, and we have different hours in Lee County, I did use their solid waste hours. And then the second thing that we added in here was the language to certain vehicles, because of truck traffic concerns, especially on Terry, I have taken language that I have modeled from, I think it was Pembroke Pines, or one of the other coasts, as far as taking it, screeching of tires and engines and Jake brakes. So there are some municipalities that do have provisions, I question that as to Florida Uniform Traffic Control law, but John Holloway was accepting of it, which is legal counsel for the sheriff's office. I have that language in there, and it might provide some relief as to sound situations, not complete relief, but some relief as to certain sounds emanated from large trucks.
Okay, council, you have any questions about the noise ordinance? We spent a lot of time on the Benita Springs noise ordinance. So, yeah, and so the main reason for you doing this is to get consistency with the Lee County, so that they will, can properly enforce it, is that-
At this time, Lee County Sheriff's Office says they will not enforce our existing ordinance.
That's a good reason, see, that would be a-
If the only way to get enforcers to follow this, I thought that was a good idea.
That would be a good reason. Counsel, any comments?
I'd like to just, if you may, just thank Audrey for adding that in about the trucks, appreciate that.
And that's a complete reversal on the Jake brake thing, I'm a little surprised.
It's killing me, yes. I was beat up by community development and public works and city management.
Yep, not believing that one, but we'll find out. Hopefully, not the hard way. Okay, council, let's see, I guess we got to go for, do we have a public comment on this?
Uh, no, you don't.
No, good.
This is just casual.
Oh, no, I don't mean that, I mean, oh darn. Counsel, what's your pleasure? You want to send this to first reading?
Move to first reading.
We have a motion, move to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, keep going, Audrey.
The next is another ordinance, now this amends our existing Parks and Recreation ordinance. I call it the three components. The first component is in the picnicking and camping section, to address large group feeding, with exception to the Leitner Neighborhood Park Facility. If somebody wants to have a group feed of over twenty-five people, I did not want it smaller because of birthday parties and things like that, they would have to get a special event permit, or, I'm sorry, a Parks and Rec Facility rental permit, and go through the process, and there are some limitations on it, and that is to try to limit feedings at the park. The second change relates to aviation, it is updating the section as far as unmanned planes. We used to call them remote control planes, now people refer to them usually-
Drones.
Yes, sir, drones. And amazingly, Nicole Perino has informed me that people, because people are purchasing them for recreational purposes, people want to use it inside buildings. We have a concern that if people are using them outside of buildings, they could hit a light fixture, you know, at which point you have a three hundred dollar light bulb, because to get a replacement up that high, calls for a special truck. So it is a serious issue, I mean, I know I'm making fun of it, but it is a serious issue, so we added unmanned aircraft. Now, I had a conversation with Councilman Gibson, and I have not talked to Nicole Perino, I did talk to the city manager on this issue. I believe it was in, it was after we incorporated, Lee County added language as to segways, we too added segue language, which technically prohibits use of segways in city parks, except where it's needed for disability access. I don't know if it's been a problem, I don't think you thought it was a problem. Do you want me to modify that section? I just need to know so I can change the title block.
Counsel, I would say no, would you say no?
Yep.
Not to change it, or to allow it?
Oh, are you saying, we allow segways now?
We currently prohibit segways.
We're suggesting allowing them.
Yeah, I'm suggesting allowing them. I don't see any, it's like-
That's what I wanted to find out.
Yeah, segways, golf cart, whatever.
Right, that was not a, that was not a plan, but that, I'll make that revision by the time you see it again. And then the final change, and we talked about that when we were talking about John Panos' contract on vessel control, we made a distinction between motorized and non-motorized, as far as within parks, especially if we do get water parks. Obviously, motorized vessels, you don't want to be too close to people, where a paddleboard or kayak can be much closer. And then we have a commercial use for launching, both motorized and non-motorized, there are some distinctions of both. At this time, it's very clear in the ordinance, River Park, because of the concessionaire agreement being exclusive, that is off limits to any concessionaire. The rest of the parks would allow concessionaires, but again, because of parking, they're encouraged to do shuttling, they're encouraged that their customers do not park and take up valuable spaces, because we have some parks that have very limited parking.
Okay, anything else?
I just changed the schedule for fines.
Okay, good. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I just have a quick question, and John, excuse me, Matt, John, this is strictly limited to parks?
This is the Parks and Recreation Ordinance, so the whole purpose of it is to have operating rules for parks and recs.
I'm just, you know, well, all right, let me give you an example. In Benita Bay, recently, there have been these vultures, I don't know if they're turkey vultures, or what have you. Do you want to help me out here, but, I mean, bottom line is, they've talked to University of Florida, they've talked to a lot of people, the only way to scare off these turkey buzzards are with these drones.
Has nothing to do with that.
Good.
This ordinance has nothing to do with that.
Have to do with this ordinance.
Just taking a guess.
And what Benita Bay decides to allow their residents to do with drones, or other vendors, or licensees to do drones, that's Benita Bay's business, as long as they don't go, I think it's six hundred feet, or two hundred feet, for FAA.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Well, I had a question about it also, the, for the feedings in the park? Well, first I was going to ask if we could reduce the number, but I had the same concern about birthday parties. So I was just wondering if twenty would still work, or twenty-five is the way to go?
I use twenty-five, which is the same number that's used by Orlando. Now, Orlando got sued on this particular provision, it went all the way up to the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals, which is Atlanta, which is the stop right before the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court. The City of Benita Springs did participate as an amicus for the Florida League of Cities on this particular provision. So I felt comfortable as drafted, the twenty-five feet, plus the fact that, or twenty-five-
People.
People. So it was upheld at, with twenty-five people?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the other question would be, it's worded that they can have three permits per park, so they could have three feedings in one park, and then go and have three feedings in another park. Could we just limit that to three feedings in general for the whole year, not, you know, per park?
The more restrictive you make it, the more difficult it'll be to be upheld. It's council's call, but, you know, you're already providing a other location through Leitner Neighborhood Facility. So I mean, there is an argument that you can go.
And I have to add something here too. Counsel, these are the type of ordinances that, you don't have a problem with this now. But as soon as that two or three of those groups see this, you will have people here. And you will have, so this, this has more of a chance of attracting those groups that do that. And the only reason they do it is to make the point. I forget what the name of the group is that came, went to Orlando and
Freakingism?
They made, yeah, they made an example of Orlando. But they didn't, Orlando didn't have a problem until they passed an ordinance saying
It was first Bagabon Church.
Don't tell us what we can't do. And so I would be careful what you ask for because they will come here just in order to challenge it. So that's it. Do what you, do what you will, but I would probably leave it the way Audrey suggests.
If it's less likely to get challenged, then I guess.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And thank you for the segue. I didn't know I was driving illegal all these years. But, and then the other question is pertains to the drones. I know some of these less expensive drones have the cameras on them and we're requiring the cameras to be turned off, but I'm not sure if all of them can be turned off. And if that's a privacy thing, if they're only allowed to fly it over the park, who really expects privacy in the park because you're out in public anyway?
I think you have a valid point. The park is a semi-public forum. It's not like a street, but it is very close to, well, closest street, of course, we use the English Speaker's Corner, which is in a park in London, you know, where people advertise their message. So there is some concerns I have as to First Amendment rights as far as saying that you have to unman it. The reason was because it could be very unnerving to parents who, you know, if they have children that are playing soccer and having somebody have it and nobody knows whose camera it is, that could be very creepy. But it's also creepy when somebody has a camera that has really good scoping lens and then you find out.
And the wording also says that they can't fly it when there's people present anyway, so.
Right, within 25 feet of people.
If the fields were being manned with kids running around, they wouldn't be allowed to fly the drone to begin with.
Right, it's supposed to be within 25 feet of people that, you know, you give people some space. So, you know, some poor kid playing soccer is not going to be like almost whacked by these things.
Basically, what I'm asking is, do we need to have the requirement that the camera be turned off? Do people really expect
I'm okay with removing it.
Privacy, you know, in the park?
I don't know if.
I don't really care about that because you allow cameras in the park, right?
Right.
I don't know.
I think some of the less expensive ones, I don't think there's an option to turn it off.
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem with
I'll take it out.
Taking that out of there. And then the other question is, is because does this preclude the, if on a special event, someone actually getting a permit or something to have a drone to where they can take a picture of the people if they want to of their own crowd?
Right, and again, I, we were having, when we were writing this language, we were debating it while writing it.
Can you, can you, can you just make that to where people could actually put that as part of their special event permit or something that they can have, they can photograph their event with a drone so you're not gonna make it illegal?
Sure.
All right. Like us, the city? Okay, anything else, counsel, before we send this on to first reading? Okay, what else you got? You got anything else?
That was it. I forgot I did it.
Okay. Is there a motion to send this to first reading?
So move.
You got a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Sacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, now on to our favorite thing to discuss here.
Oh, come on, again, we're talking about public areas and this is the medical marijuana issue. I have it again slated so that if the ballot passes on November 4th, we're positioned to adopt the ordinance November 5th. If it doesn't pass, we pull the ordinance, no harm, no foul. I do have, at your last council meeting, I wasn't sure if I well-articulated the concern I had. So I cited the case State v. Thiel, which is a Minnesota case. And in Minnesota, somebody from California said, hey, I have my certificate, I should be allowed to, to have marijuana. In Minnesota, they said, no, it's not a fundamental due process, equal protection right, only because Minnesota still had it as a Class 1 schedule. If Florida, which currently it is a scheduled drug in Florida, if Florida removes it from the schedule by having it in the Constitution, I think somebody would be able to make that argument that they have a constitution, a right of reciprocity for us to recognize even before we have everything set up for Department of Health. So therefore, I wanted to have the language in place earlier than later. I also had a nice conversation with Bob Pritt today, as well as reviewing Florida Statute, Chapter 386, Part 2, which is the Florida Indoor Air Act, which does preempt smoking regulations by governments. Aside from the fact that's never been challenged, there's an Attorney General opinion that's always caused that little heartburn. It's very clear in that chapter, it deals with tobacco smoke, and the subject matter here is not tobacco.
What I, we, it's not smoking of medical marijuana, it's smoking of marijuana, right? Is it necessary for you to add medical marijuana in this? That's what I'm just saying.
It is, because you want to make it clear, it doesn't, the state law addresses the regular marijuana. This is medical marijuana.
Okay, but the reason I'm saying this is because it looks like we're targeting that, we're, we're, we're after them. I mean, that's, that's the only reason that I suggest that, but anyway. Leave it in there, but that, that's what draws the people to it is like, oh, you're targeting that. No, we're not. Obviously, the other one's illegal anyway, so whatever.
Now, and then the only other thing I would just want to point out is, in the definition of open and public, I took this through research through, there's a database called Matthews, and it has sample ordinances, and I'm not sure where the sample ordinance came about. But the ordinance would prohibit any open and public smoking of marijuana. And it does say that, and this was taken right from the model, a person who smokes marijuana in a residential dwelling unit or anywhere on real property where the unit is located where it's being done in an open public matter so that it repeatedly disturbs or annoys people outside the perimeter of the subject's property would be considered open and public. Just so you're aware, that's in there. So in other words, if you're in your backyard, private property, you are smoking your marijuana and it drifts to your neighbor's swing set area repeatedly, the sheriff's office would have that segue. No pen intended about segues. Different use of the word.
Great.
I can take that out. That was the language that was in a model ordinance.
Okay, counsel, what would you like to do? You want to send this on to second reading?
So move.
Why don't we do that?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to send it to second reading.
It'll be first reading. This is a permission.
Uh, first reading, first, second, whatever, first reading. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Sacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
You have anything else for us?
That's enough. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I agree. Let's start with Councilman McIntosh. Do you have anything else for us tonight?
Government day is coming up. I'll send an email.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. City managers report.
City managers report.
You again.
Want me to do that too?
I'm not personally offended, by the way.
Sorry about that. Don't, don't be, because I'm a bitch right here now, sorry. City managers report.
Thank you, sir.
We're up to you.
Thank you, thank you. I've had a number of things to talk about tonight. I have cut that down. We're gonna start with Matt and the Arroyo Pond issue. Matt?
Well, for the record, my name's Matt Feeney, Director of Public Works for the city. Before you have a green sheet, we've worked with, with DOT on two separate issues. One is a grant application that council directed us to pursue in August of this year. And then the second issue was actually a maintenance agreement, hammering out a maintenance agreement that was acceptable in language to the FDOT that could be executed should council so choose for the city to maintain the Arroyo Pond. We estimate that cattail removal could, could range really a broad, broad dollar spectrum, depending on how many times we have to apply herbicide, that's a fancy term for weed killer, and in what method we use. Some of the costs associated with hauling off cattails are the, just the sheer amount of the debris. So what I put before you is a suggested approach, should you choose to, to pursue the grant and pursue maintenance of the facility, in which we would apply several applications of herbicide until the bulk of the cattails die, cut and remove them above the water line, and then put them up on the bank. And I had a little typo here, it's not bus hog, it's bush hog, which means to mow them, chop them up, and leave them in place on the embankment. I think with the landscaping that's suggested in the conceptual plan, that really won't be an issue. But what the city manager had asked that I point out is, this is not a quick process. There are a lot of cattails in that pond, and it would take a good two to three months, I think, to be able to put a dent in, in even just moving the needle on that, so. For your consideration, and with that, I'll.
Counsel, any discussion on this? I got, I gotta tell you, and I know Martha's been passionate about this, and Mike is too. I have some concerns about it. I don't have any concerns about the plantings, us doing a landscape plan along the road, us doing all kinds of things. But so far as us taking on the maintenance of this rather large DOT retention pond and assuming the maintenance of it, first of all, I, the, believe it or not, the government light in me just kind of leaves my body when I hear that we're taking over something that we don't necessarily have to take over. Like I said, I don't, I think that landscaping it and doing some things along the road, I think, great, that's fine. But so far as us taking on the maintenance of it, I, I just don't think it's a good idea. And, and the main reason for that, besides being the, I just don't think it's a long, the government light process, is that I can't tell you how many other lakes there are out there that people want us to take over. Imperial Harbor, I've made, I mean, out there, I know Martha's been on a lot of trips out there. I've been called out there two or three times. Why can't you come out here and start fixing this lake? It needs dug out, it needs this, it needs that. What's our response gonna be? No, we're not gonna do it for you. We're just gonna do it for over here. What's, what's the next one? And what's the next one? And what's the next one? What's the rationale for doing this one and not doing everybody's? And then going to the canals, and then going every place else? I just see it as an expansion. I know people would love to see it. I know it's a wonderful thing. But I just see it as an expansion of our government and our role, and I don't think, I don't, it's nothing that I can get behind. And there, I said it. So, any other, any other comments? Mike?
Well, you know, I think this is a great beautification project. We would be getting this, you could call it a park, basically for free, with the exception of having to maintain it. I don't think the $7,000 to $10,000 is excessive in maintaining it. And I know that they had said, basically, if we added landscaping along the road, we would most likely be required to take over the maintenance anyway. So I don't really see a way of beautifying it without taking over more maintenance issues. And, you know, it's, it's just been a blight to the area with, with all the cattails. And I think this is just a great way to really liven that area up, and it's a great project. I mean, you know, we have that development that kind of stalled there, you know, that's been an ice over for a long time. So I think this is gonna go a long way to kind of help make the community feel whole there.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Something that Councilman Gibson just said triggered conversations we've had on a staff level about this, and I feel kind of an obligation to bring it up here. Obviously, the expenditure of dollars, potentially up to $150,000 or more to do certain things to the park is a decision for council to make as to whether or not that's a good investment of, of public dollars with or without the grant money. And as is the decision as to whether or not we want to take on additional operation and maintenance dollars. That, I understand that's, that's within your purview. But I do feel like we should at least put out on the table the concern about whether or not this is a park. I mean, I've heard the word used. I know, or at least I'm concerned that there's expectations from folks in that neighborhood that this either is or will become a park. And this is a retention pond. It's designed as a retention pond, it functions as a retention pond. I don't know because of the, you know, the liability issues and the design that makes it operate and function as a retention pond will allow for it to serve and function as a park. And my concern long-term is that we could wind up taking a lot of responsibility and putting a lot of dollars into this and still not meet the expectations of the community, those neighbors, because I'm not convinced that it is actually going to be able to function as a park. If that's the expectation, we may need to address that upfront.
And could, could we just drop the word park and just say, a royal pond walking area? Or, you know, with park-like qualities?
It was the word that, that triggered the conversations we've had, and it's about the expectations of what, how it's gonna function and what it's gonna be for that community. And I'm just not convinced at this point that we're gonna get it to the point where we meet everyone's expectations. Just want to throw that out.
Well, they know what they have now, and, you know, looking at this, it's, it's a vast improvement over what's there. And I guess we could drop the word park and just say, you know, this would be a, the Arroyo Pond Walking Trail.
Okay, yeah, yes, Jan?
I think that I too have heard the concerns of people from this district. People came to the tree committee meeting to voice how they're just disappointed with how that looks. The plan that's here is a vast improvement, and what I would like to ask, and I don't know if this is possible, but when we think about the possibility of our boardwalk being done from River Park, connecting to the boat ramp, if there was any possibility to somehow connect to the boat ramp property, this, that walking trail has an opportunity to be a really neat facility intertwining, putting those things together, and possibly the pedestrian pathway or bicycle pathway would be pretty neat. It's just curious.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
I see Mike Kirby still here. Mike, could, would you mind if I asked Mike?
No, come on, Mike.
My question is environmental impact. If we start removing cattails, adding defoliating, so on, are we disrupting anything environmentally? Are we creating a problem for ourselves?
Temporarily, you know, they will be mucky, but usually there's overflows on these. So the, you know, it will disturb the lake itself temporarily. But in the long run, if you remove all these, and putting them on the bank, would you be shredding them and trying to make mulch and incorporate those? I mean, I didn't, I didn't see the plan until now.
Well, Mike, we didn't run that by you. We're, we're trying to manage something that's ill-defined, I'll be honest. And I, the first quotes I got were $70,000 to dig cattails out with a long stick excavator. I've been out there with other contractors who have suggested a less expensive method. At this point, until we put this thing out to bid, we're guessing at a number, which then drives what other amenities may or may not be affordable. So the, the most recent suggestion we had to maximize dollars that would be available to do other things in addition to the grant monies that we're applying for is the suggested idea there where we would chop up the material. The reason being, when it's wet, it's bigger. And if it's bigger and you have to haul it off to a landfill, you're gonna pay the money for it. If you shred it on a bank and leave it on the bank, it will slowly break down and, and stay there. And yes, there'll be some nutrients associated with that, but in the long run, that biomass is gone.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Has anyone ever seen what that looks like? I, that comes under the heading of what I used to do for a living, so I know what that looks like. It's, it's not, it's not good. No one does that. I mean, when it comes to Collier County, Lee County, anybody who maintains itches, no one leaves it laying on the dike because it's a mess. But anyway.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, Matt, in terms of DOT's requirements for ongoing water treatment in that pond, I know when we were talking about removing the cattails completely, there were gonna be requirements by DOT that we replant something. Under this scenario, what, what's that looking like?
That would be typically, in, trying to think of a good pond that you could see it, spike rush, which is a small kind of cylindrical plant that doesn't grow very tall, maybe, maybe four and a half foot. Or bull rush, which, which looks similar to, and Mike could speak to this probably better than I can, but looks similar to cattails, it just doesn't grow as thick, but grows tall and is a cylindrical plant. If you look at the conceptual plan, I think Chris called for selectively harvesting the cattails in areas, leaving some of them, they are native, they just happen to be a native species that does so well, it doesn't allow anything else to grow.
Bays of, yep. And you're proposing on doing this all the way around the lake, the entire lake? Is that right?
Pretty much.
Okay. Mike, did you want to add something? Okay. Counsel, any other comments, decisions? What, what do you want to do? What's your pleasure?
Can we find out, can we get an exact cost? I mean, if we pass this forward, before we really approve something like this, I'd like to know what it's gonna cost us, but.
Yeah, I mean, Matt, are, you have, do you, if, if council asks you to, can you go out and get bids, exact prices on what's gonna cost there, or?
I've, I have solicited. I've, I, I have solicited, um, two, two prices. One, to pull it out with a long stick, that's around $70,000. The second, which is, is before you on this green sheet, uh, was the best we could come up with, it's on the order of $35,000.
And, and that, is that the one where you cut them even with the water and, and you leave the roots in there and then treat them?
Yes, and, and that is, uh, that's for the, the entire length of the pond, and, and we have had contractor, that contractor out there twice to look at it so that we could be in preparation. Part of the challenge of this project is, uh, there is no in-between, uh, either we maintain it, or, or we are not able to improve it. Uh, that's why the, the, the green sheet before you calls for two things, one is a grant application, but the second is the maintenance agreement. Uh, we have tried and have met with FDOT to try to get them to provide a higher level of service. Unfortunately, this is not a level of service that they provide in terms of harvesting the cattails, and I, I think it's understandable, uh, with the costs that we're seeing associated with it. I, I'm pretty well confident, though, that our number is, is on the order, depending on technique.
And that's 150, right?
150.
For, for cattail removal, i- if we choose to use the herbicide application, we're on the order of $35,000. If we choose to go with a full-blown, uh, which would be a very difficult process because of turbidity issues and other things, uh, where you dig them all out, uh, we're looking at somewhere around $70,000.
Plus landscaping.
Plus landscaping.
Yes, please.
Um, how, are, can we be assured that we could possibly get that FDOT grant? Is that something that's a guarantee or not?
No, sir.
Okay.
So, just to summarize, my understanding of this is that our projection is this project could be in the vicinity of $150,000. $100,000 we already have set aside and budgeted, um, and then with the possibility of an additional $100,000 coming from the DOT grant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can we apply for the grant without entering in the agreement right now? No.
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Tell me about the easement along there, I mean, obviously, we own the road easement, right?
The road?
The road, uh, Arroyo, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and how, and there's just not much of the easement that we own along there so far as being able to landscape along there ourselves? I mean, it was said that we can't landscape along the road.
We certainly can landscape there, we've landscaped there already, uh, with some, I believe it's some small exora bushes. Uh, recently, FPNL has conducted a power line hardening, uh, which translates to additional power poles, which does make landscaping within our right-of-way difficult, because we're trying to plant, if you're trying to obscure the view of, of the pond, uh, you're trying to plant trees underneath power lines, and that's not, not a real, your palette of trees are fairly limited that will work in that type of scenario. Um, to remove the cattails, we, we have to be the maintainers.
Okay, and, and, and that is a, well, and, and DOT's making you remove the cattails, or is this because it looks bad and the, and the public wants the cattails removed? Why are we removing them?
We've been, we've been asked to, to affect...
It's not FDOT that's asking us.
Yeah.
FDOT's not causing us to do that.
No, sir.
Really?
And we've asked FDOT to provide a higher level of service and remove them, and, and that's, it's not what they have dollars budgeted for, so that's, we're left with this alternative.
Actually, FDOT likes the cattails.
Yeah, enough, they remove nutrients. Okay, uh, counsel, what do you want to do?
I make a motion to, uh, authorize you to sign the resolution and enter into the...
There's a motion to approve the, the agreement?
Second.
And, uh, and the budget items, is there a second?
I did.
There's a motion in a second, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Sacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, and, uh, do you have anything else for us?
Yeah, briefly.
Go ahead.
Um, just wanted to report, I know counsel already knows this, but report to the public that, uh, the city had an extremely successful coastal cleanup, um, a couple of Saturdays ago. Uh, we had 823 volunteers, which is a brand-new record, in fact, uh, we only had 450 volunteers just last year, and also picked up 3,100 pounds, uh, of trash and recycling as opposed to 800 pounds last year. So congratulations to all our volunteers, a special congratulations to Laura Taylor's team, especially Joanne Lawrence, for her organizing the event, they did a great job. And, so thank you all, uh, for helping out in that effort.
Good deal.
Uh, one more thing, so council member Martin had asked for the possibility that Billy Haddaway, the District 1 Secretary for DOT, about the possibility of coming down and providing a, a complete streets, uh, presentation that he gave at the MPO a couple of weeks ago. Um, we have found out from his office in trying to schedule that, um, that he's not able to make a council meeting until January. Um, it's probably about a half an hour presentation, it is very good, it's right along the lines that council's been heading with regards to complete streets and sustainability. Um, but we may have an opportunity to snag him sooner than January if the council's willing to meet in a special meeting that would meet his schedule, and we don't know what that schedule is, I'm just throwing that out there. You can either wait till January and have him at a council meeting that's already set, uh, or would the council be willing to consider meeting in special session to hear the presentation sometime sooner than that? That's the question.
Counsel? Counsel, you want to wait till January? Let's see, are you gonna be building any roads until then? No, I don't think you are. Uh, you want to wait till January?
Well, I know the presentation is good, but it's not time-sensitive.
Yeah, okay. You want to wait?
Okay. January, you okay?
I'm good either way.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you, it's all I got, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, and Steve, we're back to you again, what do you have for us?
Um...
Tell them the government date.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna pass on government date, I'll send an email, we got this government date set December, January. Had a chance to chat with, um, our district and, um, school board representative and superintendent Graham. Placing once again in their ear that, that the high school's built here to make it, uh, give us the technical portion of, of the academic schedule, and they're interested in continuing that conversation, so we ought to have a high school curriculum that is, will draw top students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janet?
Thank you, um, I just wanted to mention that the Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Committee that I'm the liaison to has vacancy, and what the board would like to see, um, is the possibility of someone who's a member of a local running club, um, a jogger, so that, you know, we can get the input, um, from that part, portion, the majority of the people on that board right now are cyclists, so we're looking for someone, um, with some running expertise to join the group. Um, I just need to remind everyone, River Fest again, the races are gonna begin at noon, the duck race is at 2:30, and the fish fries in the evening, and this year, there will be mullet and tilapia. Yahoo! So that's, that's a big, uh, big deal, that, that's been added on. Ms. Kathy sent me a note, she forgot to mention that the Film Festival, um, Gala is going to be held at Benita's Own Prado Cinemas on November 6th, and I just wanted to show everybody this picture of all these handsome guys that get to sit with on the Historical Preservation Board, and I just wanted to mention to everyone who is of my fellow council members who are liaisons to a board that this is a really cool thing, this, they're gonna do this, they're gonna add it to the website, just, you know, put some stuff out there, what the group's working on, but get it out onto the website. So I, I urge other groups to do a group photo and, and, uh, put that out there, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve?
Uh, yeah, Kathy, thanks so much for all you do, and congratulations to our Bob Gillett being Citizen of the Year, and that's it.
Okay, Peter?
Um, yeah, I want to thank the Water Task Force for giving a presentation tonight, and during the break, I heard a couple of comments and questions, so I just want to make clear, uh, a couple of things. Um, it was proposed that the vote go to a supermajority from five to two, and we decided to keep that at four to three. Um, it was recommended, yeah, that we stay with the simple majority. By our discussion today, uh, council has not agreed to any changes, to any resolutions regard, regarding the Water Task Force, and the format for recommendations from the Water Task Force has not changed either, it will be to whatever they decide, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay.
That'll be it.
All right, Mike?
Um, well, today we had a presentation on, uh, White Kane Safety Day, and, uh, with that, I'd like to ask staff if they can look at, uh, adding an audible warning to the crosswalk system on traffic lights, what's entailed, you know, what, what would it cost? Um, but I, I've had a couple of people that were visually impaired ask about, you know, why we don't have the audible warning on the crosswalks. Um, and then, uh, besides that, last Wednesday was Employee Appreciation Day, and, um, I just want to say thank you to all our employees and staff, um, it's because of you guys that we look so good up here, so, and thank you sincerely for everything that you do, and sorry we kept you here so late tonight.
Bill, councilman, what you got?
I know everybody wants to go home. My contribution for the cleanup, uh, measure, it was less than one pound, uh, it must have